It's seven o'clock, we're gonna start this meeting. This is about the most biggest disorganized house I've ever had as mayor. So y'all will have to work through this with me. We have a lot of Girl Scouts here tonight, in the next room we have a lot of Boy Scouts, and then we have a lot of citizens that have stuff on their mind, I'm sure. So that's what we're gonna do, but the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna start with the invocation. Pastor Ronald Miller, are you here, I hope?
Is he here? He's gotta be here somewhere.
Pastor Miller? Ah, we got preacher, come on preacher. This is my standby man, right here.
Bishop Slater.
Bishop Slater. So Bishop Slater, tell your, tell me the right church, tell your how.
It's a heel church ministry.
I got it, I'm gonna, okay. If we could, everybody please stand, and after Bishop Slater, we're gonna do the pledge allegiance with a bunch of Girl Scouts and a bunch of Boy Scouts, okay?
Shall we pray?
Alright Bishop.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity, Lord, that we can call your name. We have business tonight, Lord, and we ask you to touch our council, touch our mayor, touch the citizens of this great city. Father, we thank you in advance for what you're getting ready to do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Bishop.
Okay, can we get the Boy Scouts over here? Hey, y'all come up right here. All you Girl Scouts, any Girl Scouts come up right here in the front, okay?
Hi Mary Ann. How are you doing?
So what we have is we have Boy Scout Troop 258, right? Or Troop 8?
Troop 8.
Troop 8, yeah. I got bad information, forgive me. Troop 8 from New Hope, United Methodist Church, is that right? And then we got Girl Scout Troops 4396, 204, and 1936. Sound good? I said, well, we got you covered somewhere. Anybody, any other scout group we don't have? Alright, so we're gonna do the pledge allegiance, y'all know the deal, know how to do it, right? There's your flag, you ready? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright.
Thank you, very good.
So, Girl Scouts, in just a minute, we're gonna have y'all back, 'cause we got a proclamation that we're gonna do with y'all, okay? So y'all don't go, y'all just kinda like to stay right here.
Kinda stay here, yes.
Yeah, y'all just stay here. There's seating in the next room, anybody who wants it, I think?
No, it's full.
Oh, it's full, never mind. There's standing room only, so.
Yeah.
We'll clear it out quick as we can, how about that? Alright, so next, we have roll call.
Gentlemen.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Kristen Broadway.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Mann.
Here.
Councilmember A. Pop.
Here. Alright, Councilmember Foster was away on emergency business, so he won't be here tonight. Okay, so next, we got approval of minutes of work session, regular meeting, February 4th, 2019, for adoption.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? If everybody raise your right hand, pose likewise, minutes pass. Alright, presentations. We're gonna do the Girl Scouts first, okay? We got two presentations, Girl Scout proclamation and workforce development. So what I'm gonna do, young ladies, I'm gonna read this, but at my age, you have to put your glasses on to read stuff, and I don't really know what I did with my glasses, so this could be a situation. Alright, here we go, we're gonna try it anyway, you ready? A proclamation on the importance of all-girls space offered by the Girl Scouts. Whereas, the year 2019 marks the 107th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the USA, the largest and most successful leadership program for girls in the world. Girl Scouts unleashes the GIRL, Go Get It Innovator Risk Taker Leader, G.I.R.L., just in case y'all weren't listening, and every girl prepares her for a lifetime of leadership. Girl Scouts combines time-tested, research-backed methods with exciting, modern programs that speaks to today's girls, and is designed to cater to the strengths of girls' leadership development. Girl Scouts offers girls 21st-century programming in science, technology, engineering, and computers, I mean in math, I'm sorry, which is the STEM, right? And what I wanna tell ya, I just saw a program the other day, we don't have enough, girls that going into like computer technology and all, there's not enough of them, they're dying to have women, so if you like computers, you like math, you need to go, you can write your own ticket. So you need to think about that, and now's the time to start thinking about these things, because it comes fast. Um, so anyway, research, I mean, so Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest and most prestigious award in Girl Scouting, calls on Girl Scouts in grades nine to twelve to take on projects that have a measurable and sustainable impact on the community by first assessing a need, design a solution, completing a project, and inspiring others to sustain it. With more than 100 years of experience, Girl Scout brings a wealth of knowledge through programs that delivers cornerstone experiences for benefits that last a lifetime. Today, more than 50 million women are Girl Scout alums, and 2.6 million girls and adults are current members. Now therefore, I Chuck Allen, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Goldsboro, North Carolina, do hereby applaud the Girl Scout movement and North Carolina Coastal Pines by providing girls with a safe, inclusive, all-girls space where they can hone their skills and develop leadership abilities. I declare March 11th through 15th, 2019, to be Girl Scout Week here in the City of Goldsboro. This is gonna be y'all's week, March 11th through 15th, we already passed that. Last week was y'all's week. So now tonight, would y'all like entertainment, and they get a picture with y'all? That cool? Alright. I got my official photographer right here. She's been to training and everything.
Get him out in front there.
So let's come in front of this now, okay? Hey, give that to her. And look, here's one of the other, take a picture with me, you have to smile. Everybody's gotta smile, and everybody's gotta be where they can see. Back up, back up. See, back up. Alright, everybody, everybody's face it, you count them, Jennifer?
Okay, ready, one, two, three, smile.
You don't have to take it down, do you? Alright, alright, thanks girls, thanks so much, y'all thank us, guys. Alright, alright, thank y'all for coming.
Thank you parents for being here too.
Oh, will you take it yours? Yeah, that'll be fine, thank you. Nah, Mark, I think I can do this one. Okay, the next thing we have is the Workforce Development Day proclamation. We'll give them just a minute to follow out. Another really important proclamation. Workforce Development Day proclamation. Whereas, the Wayne County Chamber and the Wayne Education Network are sponsoring their 11th Annual Middle School Career, all middle school students, public, private, charter, and homeschool students are invited to this on March 20th, 2019, and their 5th Annual STEM Fair on March 21st, 2019, at the Maxwell Center. So that's March 21st, and I hadn't come yet, just for those that are paying attention, 2019. The Wayne County Chamber of Commerce, Wayne Education Network is a program of the Wayne Charitable Partnership and is a countrywide, I'm sorry, countywide initiative created in 2009 to improve the quality of life and economic prosperity in Goldsboro and Wayne County. Through programs and partnerships to enhance the educational and training opportunities for students of all ages, middle grades have been proven to be a critical time for students' academic, social, and emotional development, and students in the classrooms today will be the workforce of tomorrow, as we all know. Wayne County Chamber of Commerce is working to support educators throughout the county by helping to further expose and prepare young adults for post-secondary opportunities and as they are challenged, all businesses, small and large, to participate in the countywide workforce development effort to engage and inspire students. Therefore, I Chuck, I Chuck Allen, Mayor of Goldsboro, North Carolina, do hereby claim March 20th, 2019, as Workforce Development Day, and the City of Goldsboro encourages all City of Goldsboro businesses to attend the career fair and to encourage our local middle school students to focus on their future. And I know we have Kate Daniels here, who's the head of the Chamber, Kate, come on up, and we have Tommy, um, Tommy's head of the Wayne, head of the, um, career fair, right?
Career fair, we actually have Beverly Carroll up here, who's the chair of the Wayne Education Network.
Well, come on up Beverly, I didn't see you. We got the pure A team here tonight now. So Kate, I've never known you at a loss of words, so I feel sure you wanna comment?
Just real briefly, we are just so thankful for this entire community. We've got 110 businesses who are coming out to the Maxwell Center on Wednesday for the career fair. There're gonna be 1,600 eighth-grade students from across the county. So we firmly believe that workforce development starts early, and the sooner the better. A lot of people have said, why aren't y'all doing this in high school? And we firmly believe that if we start it sooner, it's better. We want to spark an interest, a joy, future, and present these opportunities earlier. And the next day, we're gonna have a STEM fair, again, a countywide event, and these are gonna welcome over 1,607 graders to the Maxwell Center. Again, we're doing them back-to-back, um, which is wild and crazy, and, uh, and this is the 11th year of the Wayne Education Network. So when we come forward and ask for volunteers to do the Dancing Stars of Wayne County, which so many in our community have participated with, when we ask them to brave the stage and grace the stage for us, it's to help us fund these programs, such as these two affairs that will be this week, the Junior Leadership Program, Teacher Welcome Breakfast, and a lot of other initiatives, such as mini-grants and, um, and teacher seconds for educators.
Tommy and Ms. Beverly?
No, I just wanna say thank you for all the support that you guys have given us. I know, I saw, uh, I saw Mayor Allen come out last year, and also some of the councilmen come out last year during the event, and we really appreciate the support and the recognition for the event.
It's just showing business and schools and partnership together, and we thank you very much for everything you do for us. We'd like to invite all of you to come to the NAPs, uh, this week and see what's going on with the Career Fair and the STEM Fair.
Well, this looks like it ought to be a Kodak moment.
I'm shut up! While he's coming around the corner, everybody is invited, come check this out, we're gonna be at the Maxwell Center from 8 to 2 on Wednesday and Thursday, and thank you to the businesses that are here that are supporting.
We will have over 1,600 students looking for us.
Lock down!
Okay, that's it on our presentations. Next, we have public hearings, our first public hearing is CD 319, Michael Garrett. Jennifer?
Item C is CD 319, Michael Garrett. The subject property is located on the north side of East Ash Street between Durant Street and Ridgewood Drive. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit for a place of entertainment without ABC to allow the operation of an indoor competitive ax and hatchet-throwing facility within the Ash Street Shopping Center. The property is zoned shopping center. Places of entertainment without ABC permits are permitted only after the issuance of a conditional use permit approved by City Council. The submitted site plan indicates six hatchet-throwing lanes, a lounge, and seating area, office space, a storage area, and restrooms. Hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, a time has not been determined at this time. Employees are one to two employees. The site is served by three existing oversized driveway cuts off East Ash Street and Ridgewood Drive. Sufficient parking is there to serve the folks that, customers of the shopping center. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council at your April 1st meeting. Any questions? There's a, um, picture of the shopping center, and then this is a front elevation of the space. Any questions?
Any questions, council?
I'm glad there's no ABC permit. Throwing hatchets.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. Alright, thank you Jennifer. Okay, this is a conditional use permit, a public hearing for conditional use permit to allow the operation of an indoor competitive ax and hatchet-throwing facility within the Ash Street Shopping Center. Would anyone like to speak? And if you would like to speak, you gotta get sworn in, but would anyone like to speak? Okay, CNN will close this public hearing. Now let me ask one question, who, just by show of hands, who's here for Alsbrook Gardens, which is the east side of Galler Best Road and Chafin Road? Okay, is it proper if I move that up? Because that way, we'll have some more room, 'cause after they hear, they'll, they'll leave, I hope.
I think that's counted.
Yeah, so, so, so I hate to, but I'm trying, I hate all these people standing, so what I'd like to do, I felt like we'd have a lot of that, so we're gonna move Z 1519 up, Jennifer, which is Alsbrook Gardens, east side of Galler Best Road and Chafin Road. Can you do that for me? Did I mess you up? I'm sorry. You can blame me for messing you up. You had to get to it sometime tonight, though.
So item G is Z 519, Alsbrook Gardens, east side of Galler Best Road between Chafin Road and Oxford Boulevard. The applicant's requesting a change of zone from R 16 Residential to R 6 Residential Conditional District to limit the use of the property to 80 apartment units.
Use your outside voice.
Okay. Um, the applicant has requested, well, I didn't get a part, okay, the applicant requests a change of zone from R 16 Residential to R 6 Residential Conditional District to limit the use of the property to 80 apartment units with related amenities. The applicant has requested a waiver of the site plan requirement at the time of rezoning. If rezoning is approved, full development plans will come back before City Council and prior to any building permits being issued. Existing zoning to the north, you have R 9 Residential, to the south, highway business, to the east, R 12 Residential, and to the west, Office Residential. Currently, the property is vacant. The city's land use plan recommends that the property be developed from medium-density residential, and this request would not be compatible with the city's comprehensive land use plan. Even though, just, I just wanna state before I go into other details, even though they're asking for a waiver of site plan, this is a very conceptual drawing of the layout of the apartment community, and then I also have a example of building elevations I will share with you in a moment. City water is available to serve the subject property at this time, however, a site plan is required to determine if an existing sanitary sewer outfall line that extends near the property can serve the property. A portion of the property is also located within a special flood hazard area. Again, here is an elevation of an example of a piece of, um, the apartment complex that they're proposing. This would be kinda the front elevation, and again, this is the rear. At this time, there's no action necessary, and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on April 1st.
Any questions, Jennifer, for the council? Thank you Jennifer. Alright, this is a public hearing requesting a change from R 16 Residential to R 6 Residential Conditional District to limit the use of property to 80 apartment units with related amenities. Do they have to get sworn in? No, right, okay, alright. So this is a public hearing, anybody would like to speak? For or against this? Yes ma'am, now would be your time. Good evening ma'am.
Good evening.
Mayor Allen and City Council members, um, I am Joyce Duncan, I live at 225 Hardingwood Drive, and I'm opposed, along with many of my Hardingwood neighbors, to the rezoning to R 6 for the conditional use for an 80-unit residential apartment complex. The property in question backs up to a portion of my property, and the reasons I would like to make to deny this are as follows. A portion of the property is in the flood zone, very low, and would require very much This would create a problem with Long Branch, which is the property line between this property and my property, along with many other Hardingwood, um, properties. With the landfill and concrete, the water would be pushed up into Hardingwood lots even further back than what this property touches. Flash flooding already flows to some of the back lots for my neighbors when we have flash floods. When Hurricane Matthew came through, Hardingwood Drive was flooded, making it impassable for a period of time. Secondly, the intersection of North Park Drive and Galler Best Road is a very busy intersection. You have North Park Drive, which is used to get to the Family Y, to Sam's, to many hotels, along with Harding Drive and Worial Avenue. With, with this, along with Galler Best Road, which is used as a feeder road from the New 70 bypass to 70, um, inside and to the city, there have been many accidents at this intersection, and if you increase the residence of this magnitude in this area, you're gonna have many, many more problems. Thirdly, the zoning does not go with this comprehensive land use plan, and I and my neighbors asked you to deny this request, and along with the commission, the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you Joyce.
Who do you have that would like to speak next? Yes ma'am. Good evening ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening council members, I'm Eileen Henderson, I'm from Old Farm, and I'm the president of the Homeowners Association, and I've spoke to you before. I'd like to say I think this is an ill-conceived project, and I disagree with the zoning to take place from a single-family dwelling to a multi-complex. Currently, there are 100 cars every six minutes that pass through that Siler Best Road. This, there is a daycare that has over 100 children coming every day, that's 100 children twice a day, so that's 200 more cars. Presently, if you look at that situation, Siler Best Apartments, there are 64 units. Oxford Square, there are 46 units. Oxford Plantation has 60 units. Ashley Park has 66 units. And vibrant, um, community senior living is under construction down Siler Best Road, and that is 80 more apartments. That comes to 316 apartments in a very small space. Now today, you want approval, or approval is wanted to add 80 more places to live. That would bring the total to 396 apartments, and I'm not done. I know that in just a few months, down the road, down Siler Best, going to New Hope, there is another project for 64 units. That would bring 460 apartments people into that area. The, the traffic is a two-lane road, have you ever looked at the shoulder? The shoulder is not a walking area. There's, uh, nothing there for a pedestrian. A three-story building that is proposed will make nearly impossible to sell some of the lots that would face the back end of that building. Who wants to look out and look at a building, the back end of a building? During Hurricane Floyd, Hurricane Matthew, you know that there was flooding. I checked out the motel, Motel 2, that new one, and I went into their parking lot, they had put up a 20-foot wall to guard against the erosion of the floodwaters. Well, you know what that has done? That has forced all the water now into the residential areas. They're taking care of their property. I talked to the police department, and there have been five accidents in one year at that corner of Siler Best and Park. I would hope that you would consider these factors when you make your decision rejecting this project. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Next. Next, I know somebody else wants to speak. Good evening sir.
I'm Jack Berry, I live at 228 Hardingwood, and I need, I wanna tell you a story. If, uh, this will change my slide making, yeah. There was a 78-year-old man and his wife traveling in a car in October, uh, 2016. That's the corner we turned at, right next to the Outback Steakhouse, except it didn't look just like that. It looked a little bit more like that, where that Grey Isomolazi artist, that was water. The driver knew he could get by, get through there, because there was a car on the other side of it, so he went, went ahead and drove through it, or tried to. The next thing he knew, the car was plating on the water, there was water coming up the windshield, and he lost all traction. He thought, here we go, out the windows. At that time, the car settled down, by the grace of God, the car got traction, and went again. Same thing happened another time, lost traction, this is the end, got traction, it got out. By the grace of God, and really some good waterproof ignition on Toyota. By the grace of God, that 78-year-old man stands before you today. Otherwise, I would not be here. I'd like to talk just a little bit about this, 'cause I happen to be a PowerPoint kinda guy. Right there, in yellow, I've highlighted where that flood level was in Hurricane Matthew. Right, you can see right where it crossed Hardingwood Drive down the lower right, and you can see it going all the way right to where you're talking about having that new Take a look at what's happened in the meantime. They had put in this motel right here, right up to the edge, and they got it backing up to there. There's a humongous amount of fill, that drops off like a, like a rock, right in there. And it, as they said, it's gonna take a whole lot of fill. When that happens, it's gonna funnel that, that water in all the more, and it's really gonna get tough. People talk about that, National Weather Service said that Floyd brought flood levels not seen since Hurricane Floyd in 1999. 500-year flood, well, it's pretty close together. 500-year event, talk to the people who lived through Floyd, Matthew, and Florence. Whatever it is, whatever's happening, they're getting closer together, that's, that's a pretty short 500 years. Bomb cyclones in the news right now today. Ask the people in Nebraska who are suffering historic flooding. How can that happen? I don't know, I don't know about weather patterns, all I know is, it's happening. You're gonna hear people who do this talk about remediation, and that's a fancy word that the engineers like to use these days. It means improving or correcting a situation according to the Cambridge Dictionary. But I'm, I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer, I just look at that, that word, and I see remediation, that's sorta like remedial, like remedy. That's like taking cough syrup for a cough, for a cough. Does this cure the cough? Does it make it any, it may make it so you don't notice it as much, but it certainly doesn't cure the cold. That's what remediation does in my perspective. It doesn't keep the next one from happening. Told you, the weather variables, the land use plan, there was a reason why the land use plan said you shouldn't ought to build there. We still ought not to, I recommend disapproval.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening ma'am.
I'm Longla Delbridge, I live at 400 Forest Hill Drive. And I'm here for a very simple reason, do not change the way it's now flooding. Out of respect to an established neighborhood, Forest Hill, the homes on the east side, this would be totally inconsiderate, and would devalue the properties of the people who've long been there. So, it floods, our property borders Billy Branch, we've had a problem. Wet land over there, it makes no sense. So I ask you please not to rezon this property.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening sir.
Good evening. My name's Wade Latham, I live in the Old Farm Development also. Uh, something that's brought, been brought up is the waterway that runs through the proposed area for rezoning. Because there's a river that may be compromised here, i.e. be required to be backfilled, I'm just curious if anybody has looked into the Waters Act of the US of 2015. It's very, very specific federal act that was passed that requires federal approval to move or change the direction of any waterway, and as a result, if it hasn't been looked into, I would request this not be, this permit not be allowed unless they get federal approval for this rezoning. So, that's all I had to say about the Waters Act of the USA.
Wade, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you waiting in line, sir? Next, who else would like to speak? What's all them noises?
I'm getting old. So I'm David Drouse, I live at 704 Chafin Road, in the neighborhood directly across from Galler Best. I live at 704 Chafin Road in the neighborhood directly across from Kyler Best, from the proposed Als Brook Garden project. I'm opposed to the zoning change request due to traffic, safety and flooding concerns. It's my understanding based on the site information sheet that the proposed project would be 80 unit apartment building. The targeted tenants would be seniors specifically needing limited income assistance. I believe that's a worthy cause however, I don't believe the project is at a good location due to safety and traffic and flooding concerns. The driveway for the project is, opens out on the Kyler Best Road. And Kyler Best is approximately one mile long if you're not familiar with that area. And it connects three really busy locations, which is New Hope Road, Highway 70 and the Walmart Mall area. Currently, there are roughly 200, 350 housing units or family units. They consist of apartments, houses and condos in that area. Currently under construction that I know of, a couple of others were mentioned that I didn't know of. But there's a 50 unit Kyler Springs project that's currently under construction. And that plus the 80 units that would be proposed here would be 130 unit increase, which is about a 37% increase of family units on that street. So certainly that would increase substantially the already congested area on Kyler Best Road. Per the site information sheet, the proposed driveway, can you bring up the picture with the, oh, that's it right there as a matter of fact. The proposed driveway is on that sharp curve right there. And that would be a blind spot if you're coming from 70 towards that driveway, it'd be a blind spot coming out of that curve. And if it's primarily for senior citizens being now qualified for senior coffee, my reflexes aren't what they used to be. So I'm pretty sure that would have a negative impact. The third thing, which has been mentioned several times, is the flooding issue. The engineering comments on the agenda state that a portion of the property is located within the special flood hazard area. As has been mentioned, the site drawings shows significant portions that are designated wetlands and others that are in the 100 year flood zone. The drawing indicates that the proposed footprint would take up the majority of the, of the building and the parking area would take up the majority of the dry portion that's left. So certainly that would have a negative impact that would worsen the engineer's concern about flooding. A thing that I'm, I'm not 100% sure of, but I'll say it and you guys can check me out, that compounds the issue is the drawings show that there's 80 units and there's 86 parking spots. I went on the zoning department's website and I believe for an apartment, 1.5 parking spaces are required per unit. So that would mean instead of the 86 shown, it would be at least 120. So that'd be 40 more spaces that would be more runoff that would cause some flooding issues. So given the traffic, safety and flooding concerns and given that according to the agenda memo, the project would not be compatible with the city's current land use plan, I asked the city council to reject the requested zoning change for Als Brook Garden project. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? All right, seeing no one.
We've got one.
Well, oh, I'm sorry. Come on ma'am. Forgive me. I told you I don't have my glasses. Good evening ma'am.
My name is Melody Perryson. I live at 605 Chafin Road, just down the road from Mr. Rouse.
605 point ma'am.
Chafin Road.
Okay, thank you.
On the way home from work today, I was coming up east on New Hope to the Kyler Best intersection. Snapped a photo, Mount Roach.
Yeah, sure.
Of the traffic back then, about 5:30 this evening.
Traffic.
With what? Traffic was already there. Add 80 more units.
I was telling.
Yeah, we've already, we were talking about.
We talked about.
That it? All right, thank you. Anybody else want to talk?
Anybody in favor of it?
I'm not going to ask that.
We're not getting into that.
All right, so we're going to close this public hearing. And first off, I thank everybody for coming, how you affect change in your communities. You come and speak out for or against. So for every one of you that are here, I really appreciate you coming whether you're for it or against it. But this, because this is what our community is, is what makes our community. I will say that our planning commission is here and they've heard all your comments. And when do they meet Jennifer?
Next Monday.
Next, at here, right? So they meet next Monday at 7 o'clock to discuss this. You're welcome to come. It's a public meeting, you can't talk, but you can come if you want to hear. And then they'll make a recommendation to us for our next meeting in April, right? Yeah, so we're good. Okay, so we, and hopefully, there's more, there's a few people in here and y'all are going to leave and we're going to clear some spots up for those that might be standing. Thank you.
Give it to her. She's more trustworthy.
She'll know what to do with it. Thank you. All right, thank y'all for coming. Hey Rick, send Ms. Ebison to where the elevator is. Can I use the elevator? Right in front of you, yeah. She might want the elevator.
I think the lawyers should have saw this ground and left. I think that's all.
All right, well, my theory worked a little bit. I don't see near as many people standing, but I'm sorry for y'all. But anyway, so we'll move on. I do want to thank all you who are left for letting us do that and trying to get that and get a little more room in here. So next, we're going to go back to the schedule. Item D is CU 419 Scott and Christopher Wood.
Jennifer?
Item D is CU 419 Scott and Christopher Wood. The subject property is located on the north side of East Ash Street between North James Street and North Center Street. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an auto oriented use limited to a motorcycle service, repair and performance shop. The property is zoned central business district. Audio oriented uses are permitted use within the district only after the issuance of a conditional use permit by city council. According to the city's unified development ordinance, auto oriented uses are permitted in the central business district if located outside the area bounded by the south side of Ash Street, the east side of George Street, the north side of Chestnut Street and the west side of William Street. This subject property is located outside of that area. The submitted site plan indicates a retail sales area and showroom, an office space, a parts supply and workshop space, storage areas for bikes, awaiting service and repair and restrooms. Hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 9 a.m. to 6 p.m. with three to four employees. The site is served by two existing driveway cuts off West Ash Street and sufficient parking is available for the business. The buildings and lot existed prior to the adoption of the city's unified development ordinance. And due to existing site conditions, the applicants are asking for a modification of the city's building setback and landscape requirements. Since the property is located in the historic district, any improvements to the exterior of the site and/or building, or the building will require historic district approval or staff approval depending on the improvements. At this time, there's no action necessary and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council at their April 1st meeting. This is a picture of the site.
Any questions for Jennifer?
All right, thank you Jennifer. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an auto oriented use limited to a motorcycle service, repair and performance shop. Would anybody like to speak? And if you would like to speak, you have to get sworn in. Would anybody like to speak? All right, seeing none, we're going to close this public hearing and move to the next. Which is item E Z 319 Wood &amp; Mack LLC.
Item E is Z 319 Wood &amp; Mack LLC. The property is located on the east side of North Berkeley Boulevard between Holly Road and East New Hope Road. The applicant's requesting the rezoning from R16 residential to general business conditional district. On February the 4th, 2019, city council approved a request by the applicant to rezone the property directly southwest and adjacent to the subject property to general business conditional district. However, at the time of the rezoning, the subject property was not for sale. Now, the owner of the subject property has agreed to sell the property to the applicant for future development purposes. In conjunction with this request, the applicant is requesting a waiver of the site plan requirement. If the rezoning is approved, the new owner developer will be required to have the site plan approved by city council prior to any future development. Existing zoning to the north, you have R16 and O&amp;I-1. To the south, general business conditional district and R16. To the east, you have R16. And to the west, general business conditional district and R16. The property is currently occupied by a single family dwelling. The city's comprehensive land use plan recommends medium density residential development for the property. Currently, there are no plans for the development of the property and the applicant believes that the marketability of the property would be enhanced if it is rezoned to general business conditional district. City water and sewer are available to serve the property. At this time, there is no action necessary and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on April 1st. Again, here's a picture of the site. Any questions?
All right, seeing none, we'll over this public hearing on rezoning from R16 residential to general business conditional district. CBC, GBCD. Would anybody like to speak for or against? Would anybody like to speak? Seeing none, we're going to close this public hearing and move to item F, Z 419 MC Morgan Associates.
Z 419 MC Morgan and Associates. The property is located on the south side of Central Heights Road between North Oak Forest Drive and Thoroughfare Road. The applicant's requesting a change of zone from R12 residential and R16 residential to R12 residential conditional district limiting the use of the property to an 84 unit apartment community. Existing zoning to the north, you have R16 residential, RMNC. To the south, you have R16 residential. To the east, R non-residential. And to the west, R16 residential and R12 residential, RMNC. Currently, the property is vacant. And the city's land use plan recommends that the property be developed for medium density residential. And again, this request would not be compatible with the city's comprehensive land use plan. The submitted preliminary site plan indicates four newly constructed three story apartment buildings containing a total of 84 units. In addition, a community building is also being proposed on site. Parking for the site requires two spaces per unit plus .5 per bedroom over two. A total of 183 parking spaces are required and 183 spaces have been shown on the preliminary plan. Access to the site will be directly from Central Heights Road. Interconnectivity has not been shown as the property adjacent to the proposed apartment is single family residential. The applicant's requesting a modification of the interconnectivity requirement. City sidewalks are required along the frontage of the proposed development. Frontage along Central Heights Road is approximately 182 linear feet and the applicant will need to install the sidewalks. City water and sewer are available to serve the subject property. City engineering will require approval of stormwater calculations and drainage plans prior to issuance of any building permits. Street trees have been provided along Central Heights Road. There's a type B 15 foot landscape buffer that's required along all property lines and vehicle surface area and landscape requirements must be met. Staff is working with the applicant to ensure that landscape requirements are shown and met per the UDO. Dumpsters have been shown on the site plan and staff will work with the applicant to ensure they are properly screened from offsite views and not located within the 15 foot landscape buffer. Building elevations have been submitted and indicate that proposed buildings will be constructed of brick veneer and vinyl siding. Roofing materials will be asphalt shingles. Staff will ensure that all multifamily development design standards are met prior to issuance of any building permits. At this time, there is no action necessary and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council at your April 1st meeting. This is a picture of the site. Any questions?
All right, this is a public hearing, zone request of change for R12 residential and R16 residential to R12 residential conditional district limiting the use to an 84 unit apartment community. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Yes sir. No, speak. Would anybody, I can't help but sitting for it, I'm trying. Yes sir.
James Henneth, I'd like to speak against this.
Okay.
I live on Central Ash Road. And it's considered a flood plain area. And if they build those apartments there, you're going to have to elevate it, which, where's the water going? It's going to go into people's houses that live on that road. 5 o'clock in the evening, it's, it might take you five minutes to get out of your yard. There's so much traffic through there. With these apartments, traffic is going to increase probably more than three times. I don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you sir. Would anybody else like to speak on this issue? Anybody else? All right, we're not, we're going to close this public hearing. That is all our public hearings on zoning changes tonight. So we're going to thank and excuse our hardworking planning commission. Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Forgive me on that. Item H, Unified Development Ordinance Amendment. Jennifer?
Item H is Unified Development Ordinance Amendments. The city council adopted the Unified Development Ordinance on April 4th of 2005, which replaced existing land development regulations for the city of Goldsboro and its ETJ. Since that time, the UDO has been amended over the years to address a number of minor text corrections and major changes as directed by the council. Currently, a number of proposed changes for the consideration, or for consideration are minor text amendments to sections within the UDO under Article 5.0 zoning. And those sections are 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.9, 5.10 and 9.0. Proposed changes to this section are to reflect the recommendations from the 2011 Seymour Johnson Air Force Base air installation compatible use zone, which we refer to as the ACUS study or report. The main amendments to this are to section 5.9, which is the noise overlay district, and then 5.10, which is the accident potential zone, section of Article 5.0. A notice of public hearing listing all the sections of the UDO under consideration for amendment was advertised for two consecutive weeks in the newspaper and posted on the city's website for review. The minor changes that I would like to indicate are, we would like to include within the permitted uses and requirements for noise overlay reduction table. They are now including an 85 plus decimal contour, which our current noise overlay did not indicate in our permitted table. And we will be adjusting the contours as follows. Currently, it reads 65 to 70 and then like 70 to 75, 75 to 80 and 80 plus. They will be adjusted to read 65 to 69, 70 to 74, 75 to 79, 80 to 84. And then you'll have that 85 plus decimal contour. Building design standards and regulations that remain the same, just as we've always practiced and we've always sent the information to the base and we have been reviewing based on the 2011 ACUS study. Staff has reviewed the proposed changes with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. Deputy base engineer and Seymour Johnson recommends approval of the proposed amendments. At this time, there is no action necessary and the planning commission will have a recommendation for council's meeting on April the 1st.
Any questions? Thank you Jennifer.
Okay, this is a public hearing to talk about the proposed changes for consideration as minor text amendments to the sections within the UDO under Article 5.0 zoning, as Jennifer just mentioned. So would anybody like to speak? Yes sir.
My name is S.R. Foss, also known as George. I'd like to speak about this for some property owners, mostly me. I own about 50 acres up there. And it seems like every time you turn around, somebody, I guess it's the Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, wants to change zoning or noise ordinance or something to devalue my property. I've worked all my life, I'm 76 years old. I've worked all my life to pay for that 50 acres up there. acres up there. And nobody has given me any consideration except sending me a tax bill for $3,600 on that corner at the intersection of 70 and 111. And I don't understand how the wind, I guess, blows these lines around. What kind of...what kind of a system would draw a line like that? When an airplane going straight out or straight in? I mean, I don't understand how the noise drifts. And also, has the airplanes gotten noisier? I do notice that they some come out there on Thursday when I'm at the car lot and go right straight up. You know, I don't have any problem with the Air Force, but, you know, I'm having to bite the bullet. You know what I mean? I'm having to absorb the loss of the value of my property. After a while, it's gonna be where I can't...I can't even have my car lot out there. But now, they didn't have any problem, you know, with other things going over there, you know, across the road, building and all like that, you know? They didn't even notify us of the planning of the zone changing. But I just don't feel comfortable with keep letting this go by and devaluing my property. Now, if the Air Force needs it, let the Air Force buy it. Like I said now, I don't have anything against the Air Force, but I don't think I should have to absorb this loss of value to my property out there. Thank you very much, Mayor Allen and Councilmember.
Anybody else like to speak? Are y'all coming to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name's Robert Aguilar. I am not a property owner. My sister is a property owner in the same area that's being affected by this noise ordinance, and she's owned the property for roughly 10 years and has not been able to do anything, mainly probably because of our fault. We're not educated as to what we can and can't do with the property. But I'm with...we have the same feelings as him. She has to pay taxes every year, and is constantly impacted or notified that something's gonna change. Now, she's frustrated to the point that she feels the same way, either let the Air Force buy it, or let's figure out a way to lower the taxes, because the property value's going down, but her taxes keep going up.
What I can offer you is, if you don't understand the process of what we can, what you can or can't do with your property, there's a whole table, and you can go see Jennifer and the folks in the planning department, and they can at least explain to you what you can and can't do.
Yes, sir.
On your property, because it all depends on where it is within those fancy lines that Mr. Foster turned to. But if you will go see her, at least she can tell you what you're...because it might not be as ridiculous as you think, or it could be more significant. I don't know.
Correct. And I'm new to the area. I've just recently moved here, which is why I'm here, but she...I know she pays taxes every year, and she's just getting frustrated and frustrated that she can't seem to do anything. Now, part of it may be lack of knowledge on our behalf, so...and I'm willing to own that.
As a starting point, go meet with Jennifer.
Okay.
And at least that's a starting point.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, lady. I'm Bill Burr.
Good evening, sir.
I'm a recent arrival at Goldsboro, and I'm also, as the head indicates, retired Navy. 22-year service. I lived in Jacksonville, Florida for 35 years in the vicinity of Cecil Field Naval Air Station, which, due to a consolidation efforts, the FA-18 was Marine FA-18 airplanes were moved to Cherry Point. The Navy FA-18 was moved to Oceana. I also...that's where I retired from the Navy in 1986, outside of Oceana and at Virginia Beach. I had a nice conversation with Mr. Broadway today, and him, being a retired Marine, had shared my sympathies and my emphasis for what's happening. And I guess, I didn't rehearse this real well, but I've seen chapter and verse of people complaining about an air station or a military base and/or an airport after they bought a piece of property next door to it and then complained about the noise. This is totally different. And I'm as patriotic as the next guy, and I think the F-18 and the F-15 are what we call the sound of freedom. So if you have a problem with the noise, then move. Now, what I'd like to find out too, and I share the concerns that the two gentlemen expressed was property values. I understand that property values, as they exist at this particular case, under these circumstances, are going to be grandfathered, and some limitations are going to be applied based upon new construction in terms of height and some noise considerations as well. Do I have that...did I express that correctly?
Well, there are already today limitations, as there have been for...
I understand that. I understand that. Okay. Do you need modifications gonna be changed because of that?
There are...no, no, sir. There're gonna be like minor text changes, but nothing that's gonna change.
Okay. Let me cite a specific example, if I may, and I brought this up to Mr. Broadway today. The barbecue place just up the street from me, I live on Horseshoe Drive, and trust me, I hear the F-15s, and I don't have an issue with it, okay? One of my dogs has a problem with the extra noise, but she'll get over it eventually, okay? The recent closure of Brewer's Barbecue Place up the street, which is...I've eaten there several times, and it has a good reputation or had a good reputation. But how many businesses run by parents were destroyed by the kids? You see chapter and verse of those situations happen, and that's what I understand happened in the case of Brewer's. They are now under a tax lien from the North Carolina Department of Revenue, correct? They've been closed down. Were you aware of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I talked to the Department of Revenue today and cited a hypothetical example, if somebody came in and paid the tax lien and negotiated the sale of the property, would they be able to open that business up? Department of Revenue gave me kind of a nebulous answer as to whether or not they felt like that was gonna happen or not. So I guess what I'm concerned...my question is, under the guise that the existing zoning regulations are gonna take place, if somebody came in with fresh money and bought out Brewer's, would it be allowed to be reopened by the city of Goldsboro?
I'm gonna tell you what I think I know, and if I get off you, and you and you correct me. First off, we don't have anything to do with Department of Revenue, and we have no say-so of what Department of Revenue does, right? We don't trump the Department of Revenue.
That's not the issue. That's only because collecting the taxes.
So let me finish. So if today, new money came and got the Department of Revenue out of the way, or if Wilber paid off or whoever, could the rest be reopened? The answer is yes. It could reopen just as it is, okay? Now, the caveat to that is, if the rest stays closed six months, then it would no longer be conforming, okay? So if it stays closed six months, then they're gonna have to bring it up to code. The second caveat to that is, he cannot do...he or no one else can do any improvements to that building greater than 50% of the tax value of the building, okay? So those are the two restrictions to the building operating.
As long as it met the conforming, the new zoning overlay scenarios? Well, that's a good answer. That's the best answer from a government official I've ever heard in my life, so congratulations.
Anyway, that's why he's the mayor.
Yeah, whatever. So, but...so did I answer your question? Kinda?
Yes. The other thing is, is will the city industry, the people that...and I don't know how many people are here that got the same letter that I got.
A bunch.
Yeah, well, okay. Well, there's a few.
A bunch.
Maybe there's some more people that are gonna follow me up here, I don't know. But will we be informed of...and I'm gonna make sure, you trust me.
I'm sure you will.
You bet. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Alice Hennett, and this is my husband Bobby. And we've been living in the noise overlay district since 1980, and we are very much accustomed to the noise. Doesn't bother us. Our situation is, and we thoroughly agree with the first gentleman that came up.
Yes, ma'am.
We have property, and we were told that we could not use the property to put a mobile home on the property. I think we were told that we didn't have enough property, but on our deed, it shows that additional property was purchased for an additional mobile home. I think we were told we could put a garden on that property, but that's our situation.
So we don't know specifics, right?
Right.
So what I would ask, same thing, is if you'll go see our planning department?
Yes.
We've been down there.
Okay.
We haven't seen Jennifer, though.
Yeah, if you'll go talk to her, she knows the rules, she knows what you can and can't do, and I don't wanna sit here and say something that I have no idea about.
Right.
But she knows what guarantees we have.
We ain't only paying tax, we're paying a mortgage on it too, and can't do nothing with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Ingrid Quick, and I live at 211 South Hillcrest Drive. We came here in 65 with the Air Force, and at the time, well, it was close to my husband's retirement, we bought a piece of property on 111, and we knew what the traffic was out there and that the planes would be flying out. And it has not bothered our business, it has not been a problem at all, and I just want to let you know that I don't want to do anything, or I wouldn't want the city to do anything that would encourage the base to go somewhere else.
Yes, ma'am.
If you think about what that would do to Goldsboro and Wayne County, it's just, you know, when you buy a piece of property and you know that there's an airport there, then you have to assume that there's gonna be noise. So I just...I'm more for keeping noise down in the city, keeping people used to...conforming with the ordinances there, but I think you're doing a good job.
Talk about brewmasters.
No, brewmasters is fine. Cameras is gone, we gotta have a Dollar General.
We got you a nice Dollar General there.
We got you a Dollar General there.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wanna speak on the noise overlay? Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
I'm Kenneth Bartlett, resident of Wayne County, 84 years. I farm right behind the country view, and I look...I have not made a head count of how many people are here tonight or have been here, but it reminds me of 12 years ago, a meeting was held at Walnut Creek Country Club about the Best Station, South Beston Road, North Beston Road intersection, and there were 364 people there that night, public residents in the area. There's four DOT representatives. The 364 people said, "Let's put a stoplight on 70." The four DOT personnel said, "We are not putting a stoplight." So what do they do? They bill excess lanes. I've been farming in this county since I was six-years-old, and it put one of the worst hardships on tobacco farmers, trucking tobacco from Best Station to Seven Springs, of anything has ever been done in this county. And I'm sitting here tonight, full well aware that what any person has said here, or what any person will say, will have one ounce of effect on what comes out of this meeting tonight. Am I agreed upon that?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. I am a farmer. I am one out of 99 that still feed each one of you people that are in this room. There's only 2% of American people that are farmers today. The other 1% are ag agents, fertilizer salesmen, car dealerships, hardware stores, chemical, fertilizer. Those are the other 1% of Americans feeding the rest of you people here now. And when you place a hardship on an American farmer today, it's not what needs to be done for the longevity of America and for the good. And you take this noise situation, it is not gonna change one iota, no matter how many new rules and regulations you make, to me, because I'm the person on the farm at the end of the runway. When the planes are ascending and descending, I'm the closest person to that noise. Nothing you do here tonight will change that. So why make rules on a farmer that has no bearing whatsoever? We're not gonna bill on it. It burns me up to see solar panels on a good piece of farmland. If you're gonna put a solar panel on a piece of land, put it in the swamp on a piece of sandy land. We've got to eat years from now. I won't, but a lot of these people in here are much younger than I am, and they need to be fed. There's other peoples outside the bounds of this county that need to be fed, and the American farmer is the person worldwide that's gonna get this job done. Now, suppose the city should be setting an example to other people. You could take Wilber's Barbecue. Most of you know the situation at the moment, but yet, we've got a mayor of this city that has set a poor example before the county, and I'm talking to you in person, sir. And your situation is not pretty. And when I hear you've laid off 40 of your employees already, there's only 20-some left, it's not a good example.
Sir, maybe you should get better information before you come up here and speak, because nothing you've just said was true.
But regardless...
No, no, if you're gonna speak, speak the truth.
I'm telling the truth.
You're not telling the truth. I can show you that you're not telling the truth.
Well...
You're absolutely wrong. I haven't laid anybody off.
I was told this last week.
No, I don't...I can't...I'm...a lot of people say a lot of stuff, but what's true.
But why don't you tackle issues that matter? The water from Wilber's Barbecue, the 111 stoplight, all, every bit of it flows across my farm. Piedmont Road is the outlet. Here is Seymour Johnson Field. You can't get an outlet across Seymour Johnson Field to get drainage. Now, what are we gonna do about drainage? Everybody here is talking about drainage tonight. So there's issues that need to be tackled, and some of them are not to put hardship on the Wayne County farmers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Good evening, sir.
I'm Mitchell Miles. When I moved to Goldsboro, I knew there was an Air Force Base here, and I knew there was gonna be noise here. And I don't appreciate them keep telling me I can't use my property because of the noise. If that was a problem, I wouldn't have moved where I am. And I just don't think it's right. I've already, as Foss said, the property value is going down. I had rental property, and now I can't rent it, but I gotta pay taxes on it. I can't use it. And I just don't appreciate anybody trying to tell me what I can do with my property. And I knew the noise was there when I moved in. It's still there, and I don't mind it. And I just...I don't appreciate it a bit.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Walker Cox, live at 1306 North Jefferson Street. I own property at 425 Piedmont Road. That property I've owned for better than 35, 40 years. At this point, I can't do anything with that property. The city will not allow me to do anything with it but cut the grass and pay the taxes. So I'm asking the City Council if there's possibility that you can buy these properties out. I am in the city limits. There's property that my wife bought in our port when we was young. We ain't rich, but we'd love to get rid of that property, because I can't do anything with it. Either buy it out or allow me to do something, a little more than what I'm doing with it. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Carl Bazell. I'm here for my mother, Rosa Bazell. She owns three properties in Wayne County, two residential properties and one commercial on 70, right where Astri merges with 70. And the property's been there since, what, about 1989, vacant, and we've been paying taxes on it and can't really use it. I'm managing it right now, and I just want to figure out, get rid of it, because I have three other...two other properties that I'm paying taxes on, and every year, I see it go up, up and up. My mother's on disability, I'm on disability. I'm taking my disability money to give it to taxes. I don't have money to do other things besides pay taxes, and... I don't have money to do other things besides pay taxes and mortgage payments. I just want to get rid of it, I just want to get rid of the properties.
Young man, I didn't catch your name, what's your name?
Carl.
Carl? Did you go, because you still have time, by June, are you, you're permanently disabled? You get a check from Social Security?
Yes.
I'm legally blind.
Okay.
I had, they had to go through the same thing. Because I owe taxes on a house that was done not right. But if you go to the county office, ask to speak to Mr. Allen, because you are disabled, you can, you, basically, you are available to get an exemption, because you are permanently disabled. Your mother, because she owns it, and she is, I'm gathering, she's above the age of sixty-five.
Yes.
She is double exempt. So she can get an exemption, all she needs to get is her letter from her doctor, and bring in her, like, her birth certificate and her taxes, and you are both doubly exempt. So, and you can get exempt. That is for every citizen in the city of Goldsboro that is publicly, that is permanently disabled, or that is above the age of sixty-five. You can get exempt from your taxes because of that.
Thank you.
Yes sir.
And so you go to the Wayne County Tax Office?
Right at the main courthouse.
Yeah, I know what the tax office is, yes. Thank you very much for that information.
Yes sir.
Anybody else, anybody else wants to speak? Yes sir.
I just got a couple questions, I want to ask you. I live at three fifteen Whiteup Road. So, I'm not understanding, the decimal count here is, is it going to increase, or is it decreasing?
It's remaining the same, the only thing that has increased is an eighty-five decimal contour, which is directly around the base itself.
Yes, so like, I mean, there's no hope for me on the noise, because I live like, maybe a quarter of a mile, so.
They're not changing whatsoever.
Oh, so it's not going to increase and it's not going to decrease? Okay, all right. Mayor, you think we can get some, Sheraton Forest Road paved out there?
We can sure go look at it. We're doing a lot of paving, so let's go look at it.
Got enough patches in the road to.
Sheraton Forest.
Yeah.
We'll check it, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you sir, have a good night. Anybody else want to speak? Anybody else want to speak? All right, seeing now, we're going to close this public hearing. And you have a recommendation before you. No, I'm sorry, the planning commission's got to do this, right? Yeah, okay. All right. So now, we can excuse our hard-working planning commission, and thank them for coming tonight. And you've got a lot of work before you next Monday, it sounds like. All right, our next item is item I. It's a public hearing to consider the financing of the construction of the Herman Park Recreation Center and street construction improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
To provide some background for the public, Herman Park Center began as an orphanage in the late eighteen hundreds, and the city of Goldsboro purchased the facility in the early nineteen seventies and made some renovations at that point in time. Space and design constraints of this outdated facility limit the city's recreation program offerings. Some of the issues are: one set of ADA accessible bathrooms, two sets of bathrooms accessible only by stairs, crawl space under the building closed off due to asbestos, no true gym, multiple roof leaks. The facility is deficient in meeting the needs of our citizens, such as accessibility to the building, accessibility inside of the building, space restrictions hinder the types and number of program activity offerings. Public input was sought in a series of meetings during the summer of two thousand and sixteen, which was followed by an electronic poll for citizens to weigh in on design choices of the recreation center. So with public input, board and staff moved forward with a concept on a new facility, which, for example, could include specialized recreation for youth and adults with special needs, additional preschool programs. The current program offerings, such as fitness classes, line dance classes, karate, summer day camp, etc., would continue. We also want to point out the success of the WA Foster Center, which opened in two thousand and sixteen. At the old facility during the busy summer months, staff would see an up to three thousand participants per month. After the new WA Foster Center was built and open, staff served over ten thousand participants per month. At the December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting, the board authorized staff to enter into a contract with TA Loving for the Phase One, for Herman Park Center for the design and pre-construction services. In order to move forward with this project, at this time, we are requesting that the board hold a public hearing, which has been advertised in the Goldsboro News-Argus. We are further requesting that after the public hearing, if the board chooses to move forward, that they take action by doing the following. Presenting a, excuse me, by approving a preliminary findings resolution to authorize the application to the LGC to approve the city's request to borrow the funds for the Herman Park Center and the street skate match for eleven point six million dollars. To vote to approve a resolution to authorize the city to enter into a financing agreement with Raymond James to borrow the eleven point six million dollars. And finally, a capital project ordinance to establish the appropriations for the construction of the Herman Park Center. I'd like to now turn this back over to the mayor for public comment.
Okay, this is a public hearing to discuss the finances of the Herman Park Center, the new proposed Herman Park Center. Would anybody like to speak? Yes sir, Mr. Goodson.
Good evening.
Good evening sir.
How are you doing today?
Great, hope you are, sir.
I'm doing well. I'm the CEO of the Goldsboro Housing Authority. My name's Anthony Goodson, Jr. I've spoken to many residents, and they are in support of the Herman Park Center. We have to remember that we have over three hundred and fifty low-income units within a mile of that center. We also know physical activity amongst our kids is very important. And two of those communities that consist of three hundred and fifty do not have any type of physical activity areas, such as a playground or a recreation center. So it's very important for my residents to have something that is programmed right, not just built. Thank you.
Thank you sir.
Thank you sir.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? All right, seeing now, we're going to close this public hearing, and would.
I have a little comment. I know initially, we were, when we were talking about Herman Park Center when we first all got elected, we were actually, we had some constituents, and they were concerned about us having three gyms. I know Mr. Acock, I believe that you had commented with the AAU basketball, that it would be important to have a facility for that. And this facility was supposed to be for three gyms, not two gyms. It's kind of impossible to have AAU basketball with two gyms. And that's the only way that I would want to support this project, if we had the three gyms. We really don't have the resources to even do this project. It's going to affect the citizens for many years, the money that we spend on this project. So, I think if we're going to do this, that we should have the three units, the three gyms opposed to two gyms. It's not going to help us with our, with our kids in the AAU basketball.
All right, any more comments? Seeing now, you have a motion before you.
I make the motion, we adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any discussion? If everybody's right hand? Opposed, likewise?
I'm with you. I said I was with you guys.
Okay.
Sorry, my hand.
Motion carries. You got the count?
I said, I was with you. My hand, my hand just went up.
All right. And council member, I do want to say one thing, one thing, you know this, I think you know this, one thing we are looking at trying, is if we can get some gold leap money, or some of the public facility money on the hurricane, that money's not flowed down to us yet, which, you know. One of the things we have talked about is, could we put the third gym and a generator and the basketball facility, and make it not only a third gym that we could use all the time, but also the, a shelter to have during storms or during crisis. So that is something that I don't think is a hundred, but, but, as you know also, we don't have the money, because a third gym adds another two million dollars.
I know what it adds, but, I mean, if we're going to do it, you should definitely think about young people. What we decided was, when we built the multi-sports complex, no one wanted to have an AAU facility there. So, you know, it would only be right if we had an AAU facility in the city. None of the gyms can do that right now. And as far as the golden leap, I don't think that's, that's going to happen. I don't think they're going to give us the resources for that.
Okay. All right, so with that, we're going to move on to public comment period time. And I got one question first, I see the dancing thieves, I see those purple, what are y'all doing here? Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me. What are y'all doing here? Did I miss something? Are y'all just here to come, because you love us, or you want, I mean, tell me, talk to me a minute, what are y'all, why are y'all here? I hadn't seen you on my, on our gym. So you're going to be the first in the public comment period? Come on, come on up and tell me. Oh my, y'all got a whole crowd. Were you going to come stick at the public?
Yes sir.
Okay, well good then, you got the floor. I'm going to have to get, we're going to have to get a picture of this, man. How are you, young lady? Good, good. Y'all come on up here.
Thank you.
How are you doing? Hey girl, how you doing? Good. Go ahead, sir, floor yours.
Thank you. My name is Tyrone Wagner, and I'm a parent representative for the Triple D Dance Team and the Triple D Dance Studios, owned and operated by Ms. Kimberly McGuire. My purpose today is to bring awareness, mayor, to you and the council, and actually to the city of Goldsboro, of the feats of these young women. This team comprised of eighty-five youth, all females, ages five through eighteen. These girls are, they represent seventeen of the schools in Wayne County. We have girls from, of course, Wayne County, Green County, Lenore County, and Cumberland County. This team is one of the first travel dance teams in the area. They use a variety of dance styles to include jazz, they do tumbling, pom-pom routines, and different things. These girls are also members of the Beta Club, Student Council, the A Honor Roll, the AB Honor Roll. We have cheerleader captains, they're in AIG classes, and they're serving different leadership roles at their individual schools. They perform at local schools, they perform at parades, they perform at different, they volunteer for different community service opportunities as well, and they also attend college, college fairs. Exposure is the biggest opportunity for these young women. They have competed in competitions in Virginia, Washington DC, and also here in North Carolina. I think the greatest feat for them so far is, they have won, this is their first year, not even a complete year in existence right now, but they, so far, they have won twenty competitions. Their first competition was in Virginia, and they won grand champion. Grand champion means you are the best team out of all the teams there. Also, you know, with this being Women's History Month, I just want these girls to be, these young women, to be acknowledged for writing themselves into history. This team is one of twenty teams selected out of thousands of teams in the, in the nation, really. To be selected to perform and compete in a competition in Jackson, Tennessee. It's a rookie versus vets team. Only twenty teams are selected for each, and of course, this team was the only team from North Carolina.
Oh, awesome.
That was selected.
Wow.
So not only, not only are we representing Wayne County, but we're also representing North Carolina.
When is that?
This is April the sixth, in Jackson, Tennessee. This competition is sponsored by Ms. Diana Williams. She's the star of the most widely viewed dance competition show on television, Bring It. So, we, I, they, we're just asking, you know, for support from you, mayor, and the councilmen, but also the city, the city of Goldsboro. We, these girls represent almost every school in Wayne County. They have a unique bond, they get along well, they put in countless hours of practice during the weekend, on the weekends. We parents, we travel, you know, to many, many places, many early, early morning hours. So, I just want to bring awareness to the community of these young women. They are available, available to help in different community service activities. We're also asking for your help and the help from the community, you know, to help support these young women financially, to help cover expenses, you know, that we have to pay, parents have to pay. There's a lot of traveling involved, but we're just asking for help and, you know, just overall awareness from, into the community.
A couple of questions. How would somebody contact whoever, if they wanted to donate, if they wanted to call to have somebody, because I know what you're ribbon cutting, but, but, and be honest, like, like Drummers World, I follow pretty regularly.
Right.
Because he's always sending me this, we're doing this, we're doing this, or some parent, and I see, but, but how do we, we need to develop that same relationship with y'all.
Okay.
So the question is, how do we contact you?
Okay.
And how does the audience contact you?
The major contact is going to be Ms. Kim McGuire, that's her name. But the studio is located at sixty seventy-four East US Seventy Highway.
Oh, y'all moved?
Yes, we're over by, we're, we're at Pappy's.
Okay.
We're in a new Pappy's location. We needed a larger space.
A bigger space.
Yes.
That's the good stuff.
But you can email triple D of Goldsboro at yahoo dot com. The team's website is triple D dance studio dot com.
Okay.
It also has your contact information on your website, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so do y'all mind if we get a picture of y'all? This is like a Kodak moment, if I've ever seen.
Yeah, no sir, we don't.
All right. Y'all want to turn to? Does the council want to?
Yep.
Want to?
Yes.
All right, everybody say. So now we're gonna continue with our public comment period as they, as they move out.
Mine is not very heavy tonight, but something that I did want to bring to your attention. And the city of Goldsboro has an ordinance regarding boards and commissions. And according to section thirty-two point three hundred in the ordinance, the purpose for boards and commissions is as follows. The City Council of the City of Goldsboro recognizes and values the importance of citizen participation in local government, and strives to select citizens from the entire community to serve on boards and commissions, taking into consideration gender, race, and residence on a geographical basis. The city of Goldsboro utilizes volunteer boards as a mechanism to engage citizens in a democratic process. The primary responsibility of these boards is to provide advice to city councils from a citizen's perspective. The city website does not have information regarding four of the city's boards and commissions. And those four are listed. There's the Gateway Board of Directors, the Gateway Transportation Advisory Board, and there's two others, Goldsboro Urban Area Technical Coordinating Committee, Goldsboro Urban Area Transportation Advisory Committee. The city website does not have any information regarding how citizens can apply for membership on these boards and commissions. One of those four boards and commissions is the Transportation Advisory Board of Gateway. The bylaws for the Transportation Advisory Board indicates the board shall consist of eighteen persons who are appointed by the Gateway Board of Directors. And there's a copy of the bylaws there. The bylaws for the Transportation Advisory Board also indicates the board is required to have private citizen representation. According to the member information on Gateway's website, there are only fifteen members, so they currently have three vacancies. None of the fifteen members on the Transportation Advisory Board are private citizen representatives. The overwhelming majority of the ridership on Gateway are citizens of Goldsboro who have no representation on the Transportation Advisory Board as required by their bylaws. Taking into consideration the purpose of the city's boards and commissions, I'm asking city council to promptly meet with the Wayne County Commissioners and demand that Gateway Board of Directors advertise and appoint at least two private citizens of the city of Goldsboro to fill the current vacancies on the Gateway Transportation Advisory Board. I'm also asking city council to promptly notify Wayne County Commissioners and the Gateway Board of Directors that the attendance requirements in the Transportation Advisory bylaws are not being adhered to by the Transportation Advisory Board. Any questions?
I just wanna respond to the advisory board. I, I agree that it should be more citizens, citizens do ride the bus, and, but I, but when you say two, I think that we need much more than two citizens. I think we need a fair amount of citizens on that board. Because if you just get two, if you have individuals that actually work for the city or work for the county, they're gonna be at the best interest of the county or the city. We need people that, that don't have any allegiance to a certain group. So I, I would say that we need half, at least half.
Thank you, sir. You wanna respond to him?
The bylaws set forth some other percentages or other people who should be represented on the board. So I don't know if it would be feasible to have half of the members as citizens' representation.
I think we take your, take what you give us, so we'll be sure that, under your control, we're meeting what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you so much for your research and, and you know, just caring about the city. I appreciate this so much.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir, Mr. Casey. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, sir.
I wonder if it's possible, after four or five years, I asked y'all to clean the ditch out going from my house up to Weaver Drive. The tiles are completely stopped. They cleaned my ditch out, but that's just a retention farm. All the water from both sides of the slug and dixie trail and everywhere pours in on me.
I know that they told me they were doing some work, and, and Rick, can you comment on what he said? Because I just, I mean, he's here, you're here.
I've asked him several times, I've had Chuck out there in Scottsdale.
Yeah, yeah, right.
We've already, we've been out in session, we're planning on going out there this summer and actually re-rating everything. He spoke to me tonight, I've already sent a text to my guys, we were trying to get up there and at least.
You just keep it.
Gentlemen, that water's not only running the street, but it goes under the house and everywhere. You just, you just can't, you can't.
No, I've seen it flood, so I know.
You were there, you saw it.
All right, well, can we be sure we're on that? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else wanna speak? Anybody else? Yes, sir, come on. We got the photographer gonna speak now. You come on up here.
I mean, I kinda missed the, my name's Kalon Williams, first of all. I kinda missed earlier, you guys were talking about drainage and things like that. West Haven, where my kids stay, it's, it's, it's real bad over that way. I'm pretty sure y'all are aware of this. They're, they're doing things like finding people parking on the grass type of things, type situations. But the reason why they park on the grass is because every time it rains, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, it floods really, really hard. So my question is, why hasn't that been attended to?
Well, I have went out there. When we had flooding issues, I went out there with engineers from the city of Goldsboro. There's a creek that they can't do much about because it's not, it's not the city's. But I think that there should be some consideration if people are trying to avoid water.
Right.
But I have addressed those issues, and you can continue.
So, so I, so I heard, I did actually hear, it goes deeper than the city, which was why I actually am bringing it up, because it, it, it kinda, I wanted to figure out like, what, what would there, would there be a way to, I don't know, maybe put a law where it wouldn't be against the rules to park on the grass type of situation? But I know that's kind of private housing.
We don't, we don't control, yeah, it's private housing, so we don't control your parking and all that out there, right? That would be the housing authority. But to Councilmember Williams' point, not only is, is one of the, I'm gonna call it a creek just out there, because I've been out there too, and, and one of the creeks, not only is it not ours, it's a DOT creek, and it's a Blue Line Stream. So with the Blue Line Stream, you can't even go in there with a machine and do anything. So that's, that's what you're up against. Now, all that said, I'm, I'm reading where the state understands that this is a problem, and they're talking about allocating $12 million to clean out some of these streams, and maybe, I don't, I'm not gonna say they relax the rules, because I don't know how they're gonna clean them out if they don't do something, though.
Right, right.
So there is a lot of conversation and maybe even some money, so what we can do is try to advocate, because, because, and, and the other ditch over by the basketball court, you know, if it was just cut, it would, it would flow a lot better. So we, we know about it, but it, but it's very hard, it's not an easy.
So what would your, what would your suggestion be to the citizens as far as parking and things go? They fine, they fine for parking on the grass.
What I would do, I would, I would try to get the group of individuals together and have them go down to housing and have a conversation.
You've got, you've got a resident council authority there, right? So that's the first place to start is, is the council authority that they have, because West Haven is one of the only ones that has that. So you have the resident council, that's, that would be the very first place to go to, I think.
That's fine, and I appreciate it.
We will, we will keep an eye on it, because, because we've had this conversation, I don't know, Councilmember, he's three years, probably?
No, I went down there last year, right?
So, yeah, so we know the situation, at least on the flooding part.
You remember that gentleman that was up here talking about the Herman Park Center? African-American gentleman? That's the head of the housing authority.
But you won't be able to get in touch with him.
You want his cell phone number?
Yeah.
Get with me afterwards, and I'll give you his cell phone number personally.
Yeah, I mean, all of that is definitely, definitely blessed, and I appreciate it.
But if you went through, if you go through the housing, the resident council there, I mean, they, and take it to the housing authority, I mean, that would be the proper way, I guess, to at least try.
Does that, would that go, would that coincide with, like, as far as, I wanna say parking goes? Like, they've been doing a lot of unnecessary.
Same thing. No, I think, I think the whole thing for the, what the resident council does, it represents the residents.
Okay.
With, with the housing authority slash HUD, right?
Right, right.
So, I mean, that's, that would be your starting point.
Okay.
Because all of a sudden, you might find out a lot of people have the same experience that you're having, and it's an issue, or you might find out they don't agree with you, and you don't wanna have, yeah, so you just need to go through them, because, because that's the consensus of everybody that lives out there. That's what it's supposed to be.
Well, the issue I've had with that, and I know it's kinda been time, the issue that I've had with that is getting everybody to come together on that aspect. Like, that's not the easiest thing in the world.
I understand.
And people understand that they're being done wrong, but don't have the, know what I mean? The, the, I don't wanna say know-how to get up and go, to get it changed. So I guess I'm just kinda trying to take the first steps in that manner.
We'll start with them and see where you get.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir. It's a good thing you're not bringing any lottery tickets up here, at least tonight, that's good.
I didn't bring any last time.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I live in the twelve-hundred block of East Elm Street. Every morning, a neighbor and I, we get our grip and grabs and our five-gallon buckets, and we walk up along Elm Street, and we police up the area. Some mornings I'll fill up a five-gallon bucket of rubbish that's thrown along that, that area. I'm convinced that I bet more than ninety percent of the litter that litters the streets of Goldsboro comes from open windows of moving vehicles. I would suggest that the council put out a, 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 an edict, edict, to say that moving vehicles along the streets of Goldsboro, their windows down, is not the opening to the city's trash receptacle. A mile up the street from my house is the entrance of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. When you go through that main gate, you're on base. I'd be willing to wager you'll never find a cigarette butt, a candy wrapper anywhere. And soon as you come off that, come out the other end, there's trash everywhere. Something needs to be done. I mean, this is a beautiful little city. I'm from Philadelphia, so this is a little city. This is a beautiful little city, but it's filthy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holliday.
I'd like to make a comment on that.
Sure.
It's just not Elm Street, it's all over the county.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you ride through Central Heights, or you ride New Hope Road, or any of those, and people don't mind throwing anything out.
And, and the problem is, is, is to write them a ticket, the police have to see them. Well, nobody's gonna litter in front of a police car, right? They're gonna, you know, they're gonna do it another time. So that's one of the issues that we've talked about, is how, and Latoya, our PIO, Public Information Officer, we, we've done some stuff on littering, but how do you get to those people who don't care enough that they're doing it? That's the question, is how do, how do we get? You, you know, we care, but how do we get to those people who don't, they're city, they're...
I have an idea, but it's gonna take a little more than the time to allow me here. I'd love to sit down and talk to you about it. I have a really good idea.
Well, you know where we're at. Come see us anytime you want. I'd love it. Yes, sir.
I'm here again.
You're good.
For a different issue.
Okay.
I have actually three issues, but I'm only gonna discuss two of them.
Okay.
During the Florence, the hurricane, I stayed at a shelter over on Tommy's Road.
Okay.
I didn't have to go to the shelter. My house, my street hadn't flooded yet, but I was here doing math through. I had two and a half feet of water, so I said, let me get out before I get stuck. And I went to the shelter over there, and just got this cot and did what I was told. And woke up the next morning, and got funny vibes from people. And this one lady come over to me, and she goes, hey, you know if that guy's sleeping in the hallway, you know if he's gay? I'm like, what? I said, do you know that was me sleeping in the hallway? So then I'm trying to say hi to people, and nobody would speak to me. I don't know these people from no one, you know? I'm born here, raised in Jersey, came back ten years ago. And I say to myself, because I don't like to feel that I'm being discriminated against because either my race, color, sexual orientation, my job, history, and I happened to run into Antonio, which I've known for years. Prior to him becoming a council member, I employed him to work on my mother's house. And I told him the story, and I, I called Tom Tillis, I called the news, I called everyone I called, and they were very like, you know, standoffish, don't worry about it. But I said, I didn't do anything wrong to anyone. All I did was go there for help. And the employees were just sitting at a table in front of the door the whole time, wouldn't help you, you had to go ask them to do something, they wouldn't, wasn't taking care of the people. So I said, I don't need to be here, I don't have to be here, but I did go there. And I told Antonio, and then I went out to the store, came back, and I came back after nine o'clock, because you had to be in at nine o'clock. And I came back in, and I walked, walked into my cot, and I, I had a tablet on my cot, and I was like, no, I left it outside, so we went, because we had no radio, we had no news, we had nothing. They had, they provided us with no information about the storm. So we're just sitting in there drinking water and eating hot dogs, or whatever they had for the day, you know? And I said, I can buy my own food, you know, I can get my own drinks, and that's what I did. I went and got a drink, came back, and the guy said, oh, your tablet's on your cot. So I went to my cot to get my tablet, and then the police officer tells me, you, get out. He just kicked me out for no reason at all. I didn't say anything to anyone, I said, where's my tablet? So I left, and Antonio took up the case, and the DSS was supposed to get back to me, I don't forget her name. She never got back to me. No one ever called me to say what, you know, what was going on. So I just wanted to bring to your attention that people who come for you for help, help them, don't hurt them, because I didn't have to be in that situation, all right? So don't treat me like I'm a piece of dirt because I'm in your shelter. I paid my taxes, I worked for thirty-three years, I have a right to have something at this stage in my life. So, just, that discrimination part, I didn't like.
Just to preserve, before you leave, it was a lot of issues at the shelter, and I addressed some of those issues, and I became the bad guy because I addressed some of those issues. You know, some people don't have compassion when things are happening to them unless it hits close to home.
Right.
So on behalf of the city, I apologize again, you know, for some of the things that you endured, and I hope that we can get it better, you know, because we're gonna have more storms, and I hope that we can get it better. And again, I'm, I'm sorry that you went through that.
That was a horrible situation, man. I appreciate your help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I've been excellent.
Would anybody else like to comment from the public? All right, seeing now, we're gonna close the public comment period, and we're gonna move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and city council presented for your consideration and approval is consent agenda items J through X.
I make a motion that we approve consent agenda items J through X.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Lieutenant Broadway?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Logan?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray?
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda passes. Next, we have items requiring individual action. We have none. City manager report?
Okay.
We have none. We have three resolutions. I'm gonna do the first one, resolution two thousand nineteen dash ten, expressing appreciation for service rendered by Curtis Witt as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than thirty years. Curtis Witt retired on March one, two thousand nineteen, as a utility maintenance mechanic at the Public Works Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than thirty years of service. Curtis began his career on March sixteen, nineteen eight, nineteen eighty-eight as a laborer with the Public Works Department. On July twenty-eighth, nineteen eighty-nine, Curtis' position was reclassified as a laborer two with the Public Works Department. On January one, two thousand sixteen, Curtis' position was again reclassified as a utility maintenance mechanic within the Public Works Department where he served until his retirement. Curtis has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees... of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro of expressing to Curtis Witt their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor, the city council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during Curtis' tenure with the City of Goldsboro, and we offer him our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution should be incorporated into the official message of the City of Goldsboro, and she'll be in full force and effect at this the eighteenth day of March, 2019. I'll for this for adoption. Second? Any discussion? All favoriters right hand? Resolution passes. Okay. The next one we have is the Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation. Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets. Children deserve to have the safe, stable, nurturing homes, communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. Child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting both the current and future quality of a community. Communities that provide parents with social support, knowledge of parenting, and child development, and concrete resources they need to cope with the stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential. Effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agents, and the business community. Therefore, I do hereby proclaim April as the Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders in business to increase their participation in our efforts and support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we all live. I don't think it goes without saying, child abuse is a really, really huge, huge concern, things we ought to work on, and we probably don't pay enough attention to it. So to all those social workers and people that do, our hearts go out to you. We appreciate it, because it's a big deal. Next, we have the Month of the Military Child proclamation. Whereas thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving in our country's armed forces in active duty posts around the world. More than forty percent of these service members have left families and children behind. Nearly two million children have at least one parent currently serving active military duty. Whereas Goldsboro, North Carolina is the home to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, and Wayne County Public School system has over nineteen hundred students who are military dependents. The United States Department of Defense celebrates the month of April as the month of the military child. Further highlighting the important role military children play in the armed forces community, and honoring military dependents for their commitment, struggles, and unconditional support of our troops. Therefore, I check out and mayor of City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim April as the month of the military child in the City of Goldsboro, and I encourage all our residents to recognize the contributions of our military families and to celebrate the spirit of military children across the district and nation. I think it goes without saying that those folks that are downrange and serving in our country, I think Seymour Johnson is a huge part of Rockin' Inc., but I think we also make them a huge part of what we do. And I think we have a great relationship, and we do look after the children of Seymour Johnson. I think, can we do more? I'm sure we absolutely can do more, but we do have a good relationship. I do think there are a lot of people working on this, so I do want to thank all our military folks. And with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We haven't met this long in a while.
Uh-oh, wait, 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 wait.
Oh, yeah. I told you I was ready to go. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Williams?
No comment.
Councilmember Stevens?
I had, like, two comments to make, but I was wondering, is Mr. Pollock in the audience?
No.
Okay, he's not in the audience. But anyway, real quick, me and him, we had some differences, and then people wanted to get on social media and basically, hold on, I'm letting everybody finish. That's what I'm saying. Basically, he and I were, like, having words. But then we came together, and we just talked about things, and we basically just said, you know what? We're men, and we're not gonna act this way. I know, even though people on social media would try to act and get us to hate against each other, even though we're not that way, and we're men, and we're brothers, and we love each other, and we're technically, you know, friends of family members, you know, and family and friends that grew up together, and so we need to know where we come from, and we need to honor each other. So I'm sorry that he wasn't here last night, because we talked on Saturday, and then we talked on Sunday, and he was sick because he had went to Washington, D.C., and had a lovely time up there, and told me all about what he learned from elected officials and everything. And so we were like, we need to come together instead of being apart and destroying each other. And that is one of the major things that I see in this community, me and him talked about it, about we, our young African-American youth, we destroy each other before we want to work together. And then the ones who want to work together, we're torn apart by the sillies of things and trying to pull us back into childhood and put us back into something that we're not. We're men, we're not children, so we're gonna act like men, conduct ourselves accordingly. And my second comment goes into being, yeah, we are gonna spend $11 million on a new Herman Park Center. It's needed, because that community needs it. But I know I'm gonna speak with the mayor and continue speaking with the county and pushing the agenda and the rhetoric of, we need to specifically start addressing the drug epidemic and the battered women epidemic, and as well as, since this is a child abuse month, we need to start addressing those issues and start trying to find these children that are from parents that have been addicted to drugs and that are part of the battered women, and find them actual homes and places that they can move into that are away from these horrible situations that they are in. In other communities and other states, we have battered women shelters. Right here in Wayne County, all we have is Wayne Uplift. Now, they'll find a way to get you some money and get you out of a new apartment, and try to get you away from it, but that's the best that they can do, and it's spending money that they don't even have. And when they run out of their funds for the year, they don't even have that. So I'm gonna, like I said, continue to press the state, press the county, and even press our city council all the way down to try to find out a way that we can get some facilities here for battered women and drug abuse and rehabilitation, and try to help these children and also these women, since they don't have a place to go. Because Salvation Army only has a place for men, and the Fordham House is unto itself. And once you get past that limit, then you're done. So that's where we're at.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Rowan?
No comment.
Ms. Higgin?
No comment.
Ms. Higgin?
I just want to thank all the people who showed up tonight to voice their concerns and all that. It's always great to hear how people feel, so we can know how we should vote. And I appreciate them telling us how they feel.
Thanks, sir. I do want to just say, we did have, we had a couple of downtown merchants win awards at the Main Street Conference. Councilmember Ham, I think you went to that?
I did.
So why don't you elaborate on what they won and who they were, or at least who they were, so that we can recognize them for a second?
David and Bethany Perry was featured in the award ceremony for their work on the firehouse and the building across the street from where we are now at, where the Goldsboro Drug Stores located and the two apartments above it. And Chris and Bethany Orr, who renovated a number of buildings on John Street, were also awarded an improvement award there as well. Goldsboro has received accolades and awards for the past four or five years at this annual Main Street Conference. And it's indicative of what has changed here in Goldsboro. I was talking to a person from outside of Goldsboro today who came here, and he was just marveling at downtown Goldsboro. He hadn't been here for four or five years, and he was just talking about the change. And it's people like the Perrys and the Ores who have made the change here. And so they're to be commended for their investments.
Thank you, sir. And I just want to recognize Representative Smith in our audience. He tried to sneak in here, and I know he's already in Raleigh doing good work, trying to bring the bacon home to Goldsboro and Wayne County, right? So we appreciate you coming and being with us tonight. And with that, we thank everybody for coming, and I hope everybody has a great night and a great rest of your week. We stand adjourned.